I have the whole call. The Queen of Transus President, Betsy Ross.
Here.
Ariana Camacho.
Here.
Mike Matts.
Here.
Melissa Samborski.
Here.
Please stand for the call.
Plagues of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right. I believe we're going to start with a tour.
We are. I asked Dan Nelson, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, to... I gave everybody in attendance a tour of the facility to talk about some of the potential capital projects. So we'll do that now.
Hey everybody. So I'm going to try to keep this down to about 20 minutes, a half an hour. We're going to go through the whole school. I'm going to step outside for a few minutes. I'll give you a light jacket. If you want anything with you, go ahead. I promise I won't keep you out for more than a minute. If you have any real specific questions to the place that we're stopping at, you can go ahead and ask them. But if you can't hold any general questions until we get back here just so we can keep the tour moving and keep within attendance. We want to show you a lot of what we're looking at here and kind of have a short time to deal with.
What is... Yeah, what is a non-real question? You said there is a real question.
If you need to ask it, go ahead and ask it. I will do my best.
I'm kidding. That would be a non-real question.
We're going to step out into the north hall out here.
Not real quick, but I think the improvements that you're presenting are very much necessary for the, for the school and for the community. Just a general recommendation maybe for the future and not specifically for me. It's just to show how those changes are impacting directly the student and therefore the community. What is, what are they getting for all that money that we're gonna ask? In my case, I understand it. I know it's a no-brainer, you can tell basically. But when you convey the amount of money that you're gonna get, or the amount of money that we're gonna ask for at the time, we just wanna make sure that the community sees the return on investment that they have. Academic performance and so on.
That's why I'm very glad that Dr. Plourde and Mr. Fowler are coming in on it. Because my lens is keeping the roofs on and thinking it's great because I see with my eyes, my office over here, the amount of students that are, that are looking at these two areas that we're, that we're recommending the upgrades to. And how much buy-in that these students have in what they do and the work that they're putting out. So that's my lens as far as I see, and it's great to hear from everybody else on what, on the educational side of that.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. So right now we can move into the discussion. Mrs. Franklin Scott, if you would, bring up the executive summary for two B. I just wanna point out on this summary here, we've got a couple things. The first one is there is a WASB School District Guide to Referendum in your board packet, and specifically pages six through eighteen refer to a bond referendum. I just wanna point out, you know, when we're talking about a capital referendum and a bond referendum, we're really discussing the same thing, maybe the same thing. So I don't want there to be any confusion with that. Okay? You know, one of the, one of the challenges I think, you know, the district will have is communicating the difference between this type of referendum and the last two operational referendums that we asked for, you know, in the last two years. They're not the same thing. Okay? So, you know, the messaging is, hey, we're looking to improve our facilities so that we can provide a better education, you know, for the students of this community. You know, the operation referendum was financing the operations of the school. So this is, this is improving the facility. Very different. The other thing that I wanna point out on this document here toward the bottom is really there's two options next year for a spring referendum. And the first one is on February eighteenth. That would be the primary election. Timeline is very, very tight for that. A resolution would have to be passed and filed with the clerk by next Tuesday. The other option which, which would fall on your traditional spring election day, the same one that will have the school board election, would be April first. And the filing deadline with the clerk is January twenty-first. We won't take action on this tonight. But if the board decides, you know, they would like a resolution and, and, you know, what they want the plan to be, we could take action anytime in between, you know, then and January twenty-first, including the December regular meeting or a special meeting in January. We could, we could do the January board meeting as well. It falls on the fifteenth this year. It's early in the month because of the state education convention the following week. So, you know, just kinda thinking timeline-wise, those are the key dates. My, my recommendation would be an April election just because, you know, we're on a very tight timeline if we were to look at a February election here. Any questions about that? There are some other documents I wanna bring your attention to in the board packet. So Jeff and Hans are here from Nexus, so welcome, guys. They put together a presentation here and it's, it's really an update from one that the board saw a summer ago. Not, not twenty twenty-four, but the summer of twenty twenty-three. And it has a lot of information based on the facility analysis. And then there's several pictures of different areas of the building that need improvement. You guys saw some of them on the tour. And there's also other ones that weren't included on the tour, you know, such as the roof, for example. You know, so I wanna encourage you to take some time to read through that. Anybody in the community that's interested in, you know, what we're proposing here, I really want them to, I wanna encourage them to read through this as well. It's a great slideshow. So thank you, guys, for putting that together. Another document in the board packet is called A one three B, daycare center option. This is the document that I told you about on the tour where we have the layout for the proposed daycare center. And I just wanna touch on, you know, the reasoning behind including a daycare center in the proposal. You know, we're a very large school. We're at less than half building capacity and we're seeing enrollment decline. So we can reasonably anticipate our, our free space may actually grow. We have a lot of space. And we also have a need in Western Kenosha County for additional daycare. When I talked with the, with the authorities in, in, in daycare, they told me that, you know, there's three children for every available seat. So we feel that we can provide, you know, a resource or a service to the community by having a daycare center here. The idea would be to run it through community outreach. It wouldn't be limited to, you know, Wilmot staff or Wilmot families. You know, it would be open to, to anybody who wanted to bring their children here. It would run during the day. You know, but, but as Dan said, you know, it would be a separate facility within a facility, you know, to keep a, to keep enclosed and more secure. So, you know, if that's a concern, you can see in the plan here, you know, that we've got a secure entrance in place. It's not in an area that those kids would be intermingling with high school students. You know, there, there is one possible exception where we've got a separate three-year-old room where the CNA lab is. You know, where there would be a shared hallway, but, but obviously that's not much of a challenge to navigate. So looking at this document here, the top of the document is the north side over here of this side of the building. And the layout here, what you're looking at, let me stand up and make sure you guys, what you're looking at here is daycare on the top half. So daycare up here. The hallway that we were looking down when, when Dan was talking to us is right here. So you can see that's absorbed, including the classroom across the hall. The bottom half of this, the south side of the school, would be reconfigured to be the district office. We'd put the same amount of workspaces that we currently have. It's just basically turning it on its side here. So, you know, we'd be able to, to keep some of the offices here, but we'd have to reconfigure some of the other areas. The other piece that I wanna point out, you know, the three-year-old room would, would go into the current CNA lab. It's actually, I've been told what that was, you know, designed for with the potential of having that someday. There's already a sink and a bathroom in there. We would move the CNA lab into these two classrooms, which are currently unused. We would put a sink right here and then we would put a doorway here. I met with the director of the program, a gateway who oversees our program. She was very excited about that idea. It may be even a better space than what we currently have because we'd be able to separate the lab part from the classroom part up here. That's the visual on the daycare. Any questions about that?
Sorry, I didn't ask that.
Sure.
So is that revenue for the school if we add the daycare in the school or is it more of a luxury for our staff and our community?
Yeah. So if, if we run it through community outreach, which is what I'm proposing, it would be revenue for the community outreach program.
Okay. And do we have any intentions on getting our high school kids involved in?
That's a great question. Yes. We'd love to do that. You do have to be eighteen or older to, to work in a daycare. We have some students who could do that and we may be able to tie that into some coursework such as youth entrepreneurship. But we would like to involve some of our classes when working with the students. Absolutely. Well, and, and I do think, you know, let's be honest, I do think that, you know, this could be a recruitment and a retention tool for staff. You know, to be able to have their kids in the building with them, I, I think would be a major benefit, you know, for parents. If we do have any students who are parents as well, you know, we would give them priority because we would want them to stay at school.
Does it have, does it have to like follow the school calendar or can it still be open when we're at new school?
It would be around, and it would be open, you know, we, we haven't determined the hours yet, but early in the morning. You know, for parents who work early, not super early, but, you know, drop off on their way to work and then potentially be open as late as five thirty or so, yeah. For, for pickup at the end of the day. And we're looking at, you know, part-time and full-time seats. I've been told, you know, we visited several schools. I've been told that scheduling is a challenge, so we haven't worked through all those pieces yet. We would look to hire a daycare director through community outreach as well. Now, one thing I do wanna point out to the board here, we, we have this as part of the project. You know, the board could choose to do this as a standalone option through community outreach and levy for independently. There is a way to do that. Keep that in mind, you know, as we're talking about what we wanna do.
Is that an advantage or a disadvantage? What's the pros and cons to not using capital and trying to run it through community outreach?
It's hard to say, I think. Dave, do you have an opinion on that?
Well, it would lower the rent around the mask by, by the amount necessary, but it would keep spending the same. It's still not good to a bond, which you could afford. So if you put in payments and put the payment, would you consider separate from regular payment? So I think there's an advantage of lowering the rent around the mask, but at the same time, we know the amount is gonna be the same. And how people vote on it too. So I think it makes a couple more sense to, I don't know. I don't understand what you're saying now, but you're right. It's, there's an option there to run it. I mean, the, if you un-levy one time, the cost of that, if it were next year with the current debt falling off, the levy can still drop. And that could be just outside of referendum. But because we have so many other things that are needed right now, it probably would make sense to lock them all together in one project.
Any other questions? Okay.
I also think it's, it's important to, when we're talking about the referendum, is what's gonna make people vote yes? You know, I think that's always in mind. You know, obviously we've done this path, we've done this journey. But what, what are the, the topics here is if, say, people are gonna come out and say yes. You know, and Mike and I have talked about this now for a while and this could be one of those topics like this, this is a need in this area. You know, we hear this all the time from parents with little ones. We have kids right now, high school kids, that are late to school or have to have first hour off because they have to drop a simulant off here, this, this and this and that. So all kinds of different things that do occur.
And I was, I was thinking about that when I was talking about the return on investment. Because when you go and ask for money, you wanna see is why we need this. Strategically, it makes sense, not, not for you, but for all of us to just keep in mind why we need this, what is the benefit for everybody. And I think that when they see that, they might be able to change their mind to, yes, but.
This would be unique. No districts in our conference have this. None of our sender schools have this. You know, we, we always talk about, hey, how do we differentiate Wilmot from the rest of the districts? You know, what will lead the people to wanting to come to Wilmot? You know, this is an example of something that, you know, is very forward-thinking.
Yes.
And like I said, providing a service to the community that's, that's needed. It's something that nobody else has done yet. So the next document I'd like you to pull up here is the tax levy scenarios.
Dr. Plourde, what's that age bracket for the daycare?
So I think it's six weeks to just under four. Once they hit four, they age out. And that's intentional so that they go on to the 4K programs at the sender schools. So we're gonna get to the, to the FIM SUM document in just a moment, but, but I want you to have this, you know, kinda in the back of your mind. So we're in a situation this year where we've got the final bond payment for the two thousand and four referendum. The tax rate went up to make that last payment, and then after this year, it's going down. So I, I asked Mr. Betts to calculate some scenarios here to see, you know, what would happen, you know, based on different referendum amounts. So you can see the red line there. That's the current debt service, almost three point six million dollars this year, which equates to a tax impact of two hundred eighty-nine dollars per three hundred thousand dollar home. We picked that, that three hundred thousand because it was, you know, kinda like right in the middle of, you know, maybe what our, our residents have. If you look below in the green, each line represents a different bond value by millions, starting at seventeen million and going to twenty-three million. So what that means is that top row in the green, if we were to ask the community for a seventeen million dollar referendum, on the far right side, you can see that tax impact for a three hundred thousand dollar home is a hundred and sixteen dollars. The levy would still drop a hundred and seventy-two dollars for that home, all the way down to twenty-three million. It's still a drop. So, you know, when we discussed timing as a, as a board a few months ago, you know, the strategy was, hey, you know, can we, can we pass a referendum and still give the taxpayers tax relief? This is the table that shows you that we can. Okay? So as you're, as you're thinking about the projects, you know, have that dollar amount in your mind, you're gonna be able to see, you know, how does that correlate for the taxpayers? Okay? Any questions about the table?
I just, I got an update today. I asked Robert W. Baird, our financial advisor, to run a couple scenarios and they ran it seventeen million and twenty-one million. But the interest rate that they used was lower than what I, I used to rate that they provided this last fall. And this, this lower, the projected rate is four point seven five now versus five point seven five. Obviously can change before April, still right, but, and my projections were about, just about penny off on the mill rate than theirs were, so it's really close. So that tax per three hundred thousand now would be from a hundred and seven, so it's on that seventeen million, two hundred and forty-five on the, on the twenty-three million. So it would drop even more than the projected, like, you know. We didn't, we didn't have time to update it, but we can get this updated then and then.
Thank you, Mr. Betts.
Thank you.
And I do wanna stress, these are estimates. They're not promises. You know, there's a lot of variables. We can say with, with the confidence that it should be very close to this. Okay, let's get to the last document then. Would you please pull up the Wilmot FIM SUM document? Okay, this is, this is the project list and Hans put this together for us. Now, we've already discussed most of these items. So, you know, I really kinda wanna talk through how you guys wanna really look at this. And I don't think, I don't think there's very many things on this list that are up for debate. But, but I do wanna make sure that you understand everything that's included. Dan talked about several of these projects as we walked through the school. But there's also some things included here that we didn't talk about because they're hidden behind the walls, you know, or they're on the roof or, you know, those sorts of things. And, and you just don't see those things. So the first section at the top are the mechanical systems. The way to read this chart is if there's an X in the immediate column on the far left, it's included in the referendum recommendation, referendum proposal. Okay? If, if there's an X in the future column, the second column from the left, it's not included. We don't plan to, to promote that one for the referendum. Okay? And we've broken this down into a few different categories here. The top one is mechanical systems. I do wanna stress that most of these projects will be Nexus-based. There are some projects on here that, you know, we plan to do, you know, with vendors that we currently have relationships with. So I don't have that marked out on here, you know, but when we do have a, a proposal for you to vote on, you know, we'll have that, we'll have that split out. So looking at the second one, we have electrical systems there. You can see most of those things are included. The only thing we didn't include, and this was based on board discussion, is LED lighting replacements for all the flat panels. A very high cost. We talked about switching them out, you know, as we go and. A very high cost, we talked about switching them out, you know, as we go instead, so, so that's not included here. The bottom piece, ES eighteen, is classroom modernization. One of the board members, remember if it was you, Mr. Kaisley? Somebody had said, you know, what can we do to modernize our classrooms? So, I worked with Mr. Kaisley to, to come up with some ideas here, you know, so, so this, this is really just an estimate based on what we think would, you know, provide a better, better educational environment for the kids, but includes things like flat panel displays, many schools have those, new whiteboards. You know, if we put the, the flat panel display up, we're going to have to put some new whiteboards up because ones we currently have aren't set up for that. Sound bars, electrical work. Mr. Kaisley, is there any other things I want to point out with that?
The second point of teacher mobility, we provide our teachers with desktop computers and a laptop. This would provide them a laptop and they would, they would move amongst the building to different classrooms that they may teach in with that device, with docking stations. So, we essentially cut our amount of devices purchased for the building down by the number of staff members that we would provide devices for. In this case, sixty rooms, let's say, just a randomized number of those. We also look to give the teachers the ability to have a little bit more student engagement, more front of class display of work that they may be doing. It's perfect that Zoe is sitting over here on her student device working. She could be able to present what she's working on with her peers to the, the front of the class, have discussions about work that they're, they're, they're learning in those classrooms. That probably sums up about it. It's kind of what you would see in any modern school built today, any modern, you know, college built today. The idea of having classroom projectors is kind of falling along the wayside because of lack of resolution. Screen sizes have gotten larger, resolutions have gotten better, it's just a much better experience overall.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that is not the futuristic state, that is just now.
It is not, and it's, it's really difficult. Over the years, everybody's always asked, Nick, when are we getting, yeah, yes.
Just getting up to speed.
It's, it's an infrastructure change, we don't have the wiring in walls. In two thousand and seven, when we built the building, if somebody said there's going to be a TV seventy-five inches hanging on this wall someday, I, I would have been called crazy. We were still hauling around fifty-pound CRT monitors from classroom to classroom. So, things change really quick in, in twenty years' time, and I think we're ready to kind of move on to what would be considered pleasant day infrastructure in schools.
Another thing that I'd like to point out in this area here is, based on board feedback, we added more of the roofing into the plan. So, the majority of the roofing is now included. There is the medium need, that's not, so just be aware of that. This also includes, oh, I'm sorry, that's in, that's in the next section, my mistake. Uh, let's move on to that. Exterior deferred maintenance. So, this includes some of the outside stuff that Dan talked about as far as hardscapes, you know, there's facades in here, there's the courtyard. The roofing is included in this. There are several items related to our athletic facilities that are not included here. And, and we talked about some athletic options in the past. Athletics, it's a, it's an area that, you know, people are very passionate about, you know, they want to see things like that included. You know, but the recent history in Wisconsin is that athletic facilities are not passing a lot of referendums. You know, and, you know, you guys have some experience with that as well. You know, I think once you, once you have, you know, a certain level or a certain quality of facilities at the high school level, you know, people think, that's okay. You're good, you know, we don't want you to be a community, we don't want you to be a, you know, a, a college-level campus on our dollar, right? So, that's the challenge. I, I do want, you know, to share with the board that there are, there are staff members, mainly coaches, and some community members that would like to see more athletic options included into this plan. Know that that does increase the cost, you know, and we're looking to, to try to capture the drop in the mill rate and still have a drop in taxes. If we were to add things that are not included here, like turf, baseball and softball fields, or an indoor training center that's turfed for football, you know, like Alcorn has, that, you know, the cost increases rapidly. You know, so I don't have those things in here, you know, if the board is interested in exploring those things, you know, we can look to do that. But, but, but I'm hesitant that that, you know, changes the vote in a significant way, let's put it that way.
I'm okay the way it is, I am, right?
Yes.
Not speaking for everybody.
I, I just want to, because, you know, there are people who've said, hey, we'd like to see more.
It's available if somebody wants it.
And, and people can certainly come and address the board during an open session, you know, if they've got thoughts on that, or during a public comment section.
And I appreciate Dr. Plor bringing that up because that, there is very passionate people that would like to see certain things, obviously. And so, I appreciate bringing that up to the board because that, that, we wouldn't like them to have that conversation, so, thank you, Dr. Plor.
Below that, we have flooring and paint. Mr. Nelson talked about that, we'd like to upgrade the flooring away from the, the cheaper stuff, if possible. It also includes, you know, potential carpet tile in the, in the classrooms, but we talked about, you know, maybe making that just regular tile. We've gone back and forth because, because of the maintenance of those things, so, you know, that's something we still need to kind of hash out. Below that, we've got the tech ed expansion in the metal shop, the fax area, which is the kitchens here. An additional facility for maintenance, call facility, you know, a glorified maintenance shed, you can call it that. The daycare, you can see that. Updating the security at door A, right now, people walk in through the first set of doors and they're greeted at the office. We'd like them to not get through that first set of doors until they identify themselves. So, so that's what that's referring to there. And then, updated furniture here in the library, recall that. Ms. Bank presented her library plan to the board last year, it was approved. She had recommended that we get more flexible seating in here, more comfortable for the students. And that ticket price at the time was sixty-seven thousand dollars for that, I believe. You know, we've expected that to probably go up a little bit, so I've got eighty-three budgeted here. And then, below that, there's some owners discretionary as well, and that's for, you know, additional things, additional costs that come with, with renovations. Some seen, some unseen, you can see some examples in there. So, gentlemen, is there anything in particular that, that you want to point out on the list before, you know, we give the board a chance to ask questions?
The one point I'd make is, is, as Dr. Plor said, some of these are identified, the school would do, some would be NEXUS projects. I want to make, remind you that NEXUS does not swing hammers, this is just budgets that we've put together, bidding out millions and outs of projects annually. Obviously, if we're fortunate enough to pass a referendum, what we do is we put projects, engineering, architect, mechanical, electrical, fire protection, put it on paper, get a bid out, obviously, if we come in under budget, that money goes back to the school. The school can pay down the bill earlier, or we can do more projects that aren't on this list. If it comes in over, it's on NEXUS, you know, it's on us to, you know, rework the drawings so that we can come in within budget. So, just want to make, make sure that's clear about how, how we operate and how we partner with the school and all, all the school districts that we work with.
So, I, I want to open up for discussion, questions, comments, concerns about the proposal.
The only question I have is, we, we have the difference between quartz and carpet. We don't know which way we're going. Which is the better way?
So, that was kind of the early discussion.
Yeah.
It's hot over. The, the, the quartz was looking at hallways, the carpets possibly for the classroom. That's still kind of up in the air, and there's some other options that we're looking at that might be a better fit for the school. We'd have to look at what's underneath, the VCT, you know, people say, well, I'm just staying concrete. I don't, I don't think that's a possibility. There's, there's so many different options nowadays. I think that we would really, moving forward, we would need to go visit some schools and look at, along with a designer too, on how they would fit with our color scheme and what we're looking at doing.
Okay.
So, that's still way in, open, we just wanted to have that budget and those numbers in there.
Got it.
So that we, we can know, and, and honestly, it, it could swing the number up or down a little bit, that's why we got some discretionary. And we also wanted a little bit of weight on there.
Generally, we're at number, we're pretty comfortable with that number, but we've, I mean, within reason, we can't come in with diamond tile, but we've got some flexibility to make a smart decision about the proper floor and then likely stay within budget.
No trust, but, you know, we'll be able to do something similar.
What kind of flooring are we going to go with in the culinary?
I, we have in our commercial kitchens right now the same thing that we have in our, our locker rooms, which is a epoxy flooring, which has been very wear resistant and slip resistant. So, epoxy is something that I, you know, I, I've been speaking with a lot of different schools. A lot of them really are, are looking at a lot of epoxy items, especially when they have unknown surfaces underneath and different things like that. But definitely, you can see in there, we have the vinyl tile, we have to move all of that equipment out to refinish the floor underneath and move it all back in the summer, we have epoxy, we're not going to have to do that, so. I want to just really quickly point out too on that, that sheet that we just looked at, some of those numbers for the expanded future needs, those are like one or the other, they're kind of in there, so like we have some different options. If we get new boilers, then we don't need to add air filtration to the current boilers. If we do the full clean out of the storm, sort of, the storm hot, the tension hot, we don't need to do the less. So, just if you're looking at those numbers, the future needs aren't exactly something that has to be done in the future.
I guess I, just have a comment on the panel here in a second. There's, there's some flexibility there, I think, should the board or even the community desire and say, you know what, we just left the tax levy. I've said it where it is already, then you're looking at rather than twenty bond issue, twenty-year bond issue, you're looking at six or seven-year bond issue. Right, so, there's, it doesn't have to be twenty, you know, or, and we can look at where we're at, get feedback from the community. We'd rather get it paid off faster, which, the interest rate's a little bit lower and a lot less interest over time, because like you repay the mortgage. Or, you know, it may be a lot of interest and stretching it up longer to save that tax, that tax drop. But there's flexibility there, it doesn't have to be twenty years.
Can you do the twenty year and then pay off early?
Um, so, so most bonds are issued with a prepayment term, there's so many years for this. Investors are investing in tax default bonds. They don't want to issue with the trust's vision and have the municipality pay it after next year. So, it's usually a term, let's say it's eight years, ten years, that you can't pay it off early. You can go to something called a feasance, where interest rates are right, you can borrow money, invest the money, and the investment pays the old payment, the new payment kind of thing, but that's, interest rates have to be in the right position to be able to do that. And so, our financial advisors are pretty good at keeping an eye on that and recommending to us when that's feasible to do that. And we, we did that on our past funds a, a couple of times. But generally speaking, no, you can levy additional and invest that money and have it, that's why, that's why our payment last year was so low because the district had sometimes when the levy was dropping a lot, we'd levy a little more to the fund serv, the fund debt service levy and have cash sitting there and that, that was used to make that final payment, that, but, yeah, you can, there's different ways to, to do that, I guess.
In the past, we've gone with the longer term with our community, correct? When we've done these?
I think that was how it was presented to the community.
Okay.
In two thousand and four, it was always presented as a twenty-year payback. That one was designed as a stable tax rate levy, and so the payments got larger every year because of the expectation of the, the valuation was going to get larger. And in two thousand and six, that, when the great recession prompted values dipped, and our tax rate rate ended up being higher than it. It was okay, we just still levy it, because the approval of the project was the tax rate on that, on that bond would exceed a dollar twenty-five, and it did at some points within a twenty-year term. This, this is just a straight amortization, it's equal payments over twenty years.
Mr. Kaisley, Mr. Crowell, Mr. Nelson, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, not at this time. You know, I think the impact, you know, what we're seeing in our, in our conference and our community is, we have a lot of school districts that have passed referendums, that have some of these objects that we're looking at, especially in this unique area that we are, where open enrollment is so prevalent between Yungro, Westosha, like Geneva, it's, it's, it's a unique area. But even with the area that I am, you know, living in Meskigo, passed a referendum a couple of years ago to build all these nice things. Franklin Community right next to us now said, we need, we have to pass a referendum because they're, you know, what they have. And so, you, I think our community needs to understand the bigger picture of what this does. Open enrollment allows students and families to pick where they feel that is the best education for their children, and as parents, we expect that. And I, I believe that we are in a community in a location that, that is the best because of our staff. But you won't know that unless you, you know our staff. So, I think that's an element that our community sometimes forget, because we have a lot of community members that have lived here their entire life. They had, they've never had to shop school districts, and we're seeing more and more families shopping for school districts. And I hate to use that term, but it's, it's, it's the term that's used, and so.
And we're at a disadvantage when it comes to open enrollment because of the Illinois border. We, we'd, we can't accept any open enrollment students from the south of us, you know, so, that's a factor in a lot of things.
Why is that, just for my information? Because of the?
They live in a different state, they, they can't open enrollment to ours.
Yeah, yeah, you have to have residency in Wisconsin.
Oh, great.
I guess I would be curious to know, the ones that are getting things passed, are they going for the long, the long time paying it back? Or are they going for the shorter? Because to me, it seems like, all right, the addition is twenty years old, and we've got all of these, these projects. So, why would we want to go for the long, long haul and then do it all over again? You know?
Dave, do you have any insight on that, what, what other districts are doing?
Yes, most of them end up being twenty-year bonds. At, you know, twenty-three million, I know it sounds like a lot of money, or two thousand and four is a forty million dollar referendum. We had a two hundred thousand square feet, the building, Centrol's referendum was forty million, and I think we had a fifty thousand square feet. It's just a hundred million dollar referendum, some schools, those students, school repairs, and those schools is not uncommon, you don't get for. So, if you're doing a hundred million dollar referendum, it's three hundred years, right? And, you know, you just, but, I, I, I mean, I kind of agree with you, that's why I said that's an option of, you know, giving taxes kind of where they are and trying to get it paid off earlier, which gives the, the district, you know, we've long retired by seven or eight years, but it's a lot more flexibility at that point, right? You're debt-free at that time, and maybe you need an operator referendum, our operating budget looks decent right now, after next year, so. I, I like the shorter term, I like it so paid off.
It might, sorry, Dave.
The other, and, and the other, I was in another panel, I know you have other questions to, but I just wanted to, you talked in turn, and I know this has come up before. People will, will ask, when do you go to, why didn't you plan, or did you know that roofs would have to be replaced? Didn't you know that what, of, of course we did, and this is, this was our plan. Like, let's get, let's get this debt paid off so we don't have to go to referendum and have two bonds left to pay it off. This is what the schools do. There is no school in Wisconsin or anywhere else that I'm aware of that could do any of this type of repairs or operating budget. You can't. This is a hundred million dollar building sitting here, and it's owned by this community, and it's in their best interest to make at least the necessary stuff, right? The roofs and the boilers and the stuff that, you know, you want to have pockets in classrooms catching water because the roofs are already there. So, that's, you know, that, that was the plan, let's, let's, you, Dan talked about a lot of things over this, the tour that we've had piecing together over the, like, we've just been making it work for a couple of years. Because we need to get this debt paid off, so we can ask for these repairs that have been needed now, probably for several years.
In my, in my opinion, as, as administrator in Racine who passed a one billion dollar referendum, and then as a taxpayer in Meskigo who passed a referendum, I don't even know what the amount was or how long it was for, didn't care. What, what I did, what my wife and I were passionate about was how was it going to impact our kids and our community? You know, I heard the same thing in Racine when we put up a one billion. Um, you know, I heard the same thing in Racine, when we put up a one billion dollar referendum, we never had the question of, are you gonna pay this off in six or seven years? Are you gonna pay it off in twenty years? As a taxpayer, I didn't care for the fact that I, I voted yes in Meskigo. Because I knew the additions and what that high school and what that community was going to do is going to benefit not only my kids for generations. So, I think sometimes we might get stuck with numbers and looking at that, just my opinion. But once again, as a, as a community member, as a family member, I think fit, they wanna know, how can I benefit from this? The finances, the, the technique, the looking at that, there are going to be individuals that wanna know those questions, but the mass majority. Um, to sit here and talk about mill rates and understand this and the depth of that, I think it's, in, in my opinion, is looking at, what's it gonna do to benefit me? My kids, my kids' kids, my future, and what, what the impact for the community. Um, if that's the selling point, uh, I think you're gonna see yeses, you know, paying it off in six, seven years or twenty years. You know, that's.
Depends, yeah.
Well, this is a plan that all kids benefit from.
Yeah, especially with the nursery.
If I have two little kids, what am I gonna get in my education in the future for, for them? Uh, what, what are the taxes going for? So, I, I think the idea of presenting the case of, what is it for me? As opposed to the payments and maybe, you know, the, the details, like you were saying, that maybe don't benefit too much, the, the case.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I don't have any.
I think I saw.
Can I give a little comment, or is that, are you guys not taking public comments?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
So, my name's Amy Rechner, I am a Willnot alumni, I'm a very good, big advocate of Willnot. I have four little boys from kindergarten to sixth grade that'll be coming through Willnot High School. So, over this past, I'm gonna say year, season, school year, me personally, I've seen a huge shift in working with the high school. So, I'm on the Willnot Junior Panther Board, and my kids are part of football, they're part of the Junior Panther Basketball, they're part of the Junior Panther Wrestling, they do it all. So, one thing I know I asked Dan, first of all, I totally appreciated the facility, I would go no matter what if you said it was a hundred million, five million, I would be yes. But I think walking around and doing the different things, that's huge. So, what are we doing to people my age to bring these junior families I'm gonna call into Willnot to say, this does impact your kid? I know when I asked Dan, what are we doing, like, for one thing I think about, we don't have like a Junior Panther Baseball yet. Or I know I see a lot more on the Junior Softball, which is super cool, but it amazes me, now that my kids are getting that age, the amount that goes into sports. I know sports aren't everything, but like, you're kind of to gateway. We all know school's education, but a big part is sports as well. For me, it's, what am I putting my kids in to keep them off, I'm not gonna say the streets of Willnot, but you don't know what's out there, it is scary too. So, when I say like, hey, are we putting turf out at the baseball, the softball fields, no, it's too much. I think if you go back and you went to, um, the community and surveyed, they would think differently. Because I think you're getting a junior, I'm gonna say Junior Panther involvement, that we haven't had in the past. And I think that is huge for up and coming. Because for me, I think of like my dad who's retired, had I not went and been like, dad, this is every reason why you should be voting for Willnot, my uncle who's retired, they would have voted yes. They're retired, you know, their kids are done. But you get more junior involvement, and you get us out there talking and talking to neighbors, parents, grandparents. So, I just, my biggest thing to you is, look big picture too, I know it might be turf, it's a little bit more. But like, those sports are bringing families in, and they're huge, and when you say it doesn't impact, there is open enrollment. And like the Badgers, the Young and Grove, the Westosha, they have it all, and everyone wants to be the next best thing. So, as we're putting this out there and we have money falling off, think of those little things that I think are a big impact to our school, our community. Because in three years, we're not gonna go back and ask for another capital referendum, do we throw it in now? So, I guess my thing, do you please look like big picture and look at it all? Because I think the junior involvement is huge. I think from the football program, the football and cheer, I would be happy, we have over two hundred kids involved. To say, hey, parents come in, let's do a tour, let's hear you, you know, you talk about the referendum, I'm all for helping you guys out. The wrestling is C and N program at the junior level pro, eighty plus kids, that's huge. I know the basketball's a work in progress, but being able to say, hey, this is what we're doing for your kids that are upcoming. Cause I know y'all think they're gonna make it to the pros, but like, that is a big deal. And I think getting these young families involved that maybe weren't involved is huge. But I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you for your involvement with the school, we really appreciate it, thank you.
And I do wanna point out that Amy and I have had a relationship now for over a year, talking about the youth and the Junior Panthers and, you know, the importance of, once again, a community-based school. You know, we've, we've had a relationship and our coaches have a relationship in saying, how can we help each other from simple things of equipment handout? Simple things of using our facilities, simple things of storing, uh, you know, items, using mailboxes, whatever it may be. And so, I think you're, I think you're correct, over the last year, year and a half, that relationship is starting to become very strong as the administrative team and the, uh, the district team is starting to be, be involved with the community. You know, I think when we first came on board, you know, Mike and I were still, you know, getting our, getting our, getting our feet settled. But making relationships with, uh, people like Amy who got the Homecoming Prairie back on the street and, uh, some of those components is, is important. And I think we've built some of that trust within our community too, and I give credit to Mike and the board, uh, start them building those relationships like you mentioned.
And I think just filling this theme, I mean, it was sad to me last year when I brought my kids, cause they're part of the Junior Panther Basketball. And there's not a lot of the stands, I just think that's like, when we were there, they were packed, and that's what I wanna like get back to. And that's what we're trying to promote, be promoted big through the football, like, all right, let's go to practice and then let's go to the game afterwards. Wear your jerseys, get excited about it, and that's what I think it's nice to start seeing come back and get the community involvement back in Willnot.
Just, just a, um, follow up on, on her, um, statement there. Uh, recall that we did survey the community back in the summer of twenty twenty-three. I don't know exactly what board meeting we presented the results, but, but if you go back in board docs, it's either in October or November of twenty twenty-three. You can review those and you, and you can see how the, the community responded to our question about turf specifically on the baseball and softball fields. Um, and I do wanna, I didn't touch on it when I was explaining, um, some of the items, but we do have a refurbishment of dirt and grass on those fields. It's, it's about a fifth of the cost, maybe a sixth of the cost of doing that, so we know, we know we need to invest in those fields. Um, but, but turf is incredibly expensive, it really is. Um, so, so just be aware of that, um, we, we do have a project included to improve the baseball and softball infield.
Going back to our needs and non-needs report. The purple twenty-one million is selected immediate needs total, is that column B all added up together? Danielle, can you bring that? Yes, and then the four million is the column C? So technically, all in said and done, we need twenty-six million?
So, some of that again is, is, um, you know, we'll have things in there, either or.
So, that's like the boilers?
Either or, oh, so the pre, pre-filters.
Got it.
If we have to try to keep these old boilers, we decided to actually go in, so that would actually not be something we would need.
Got it, okay. Um, I remember you saying that, but it wasn't like.
There are the, there are the full clean out of our stormy retention hot, and then there's a minimal, so the obviously, we're gonna move forward with the, the full, um, most likely, recommended.
So, the twenty-three here is if we needed the, you know, what is future needs plus what is immediate needs would be total, like the twenty-three million? On the bottom here?
No, um.
Okay.
I just had, I just had Dave include up to twenty-three million in, in case there were, you know, other options the board wanted to consider.
Got it.
It doesn't represent any specific, um, project list.
Okay, so we just need the twenty-one million to do.
You could do the math on it.
I could, I was just asking, so clarification, where this twenty-three came in, I was kinda like, is that the twenty-three? Cause I'm looking at twenty-seven, six.
And thank you for doing the math for us, we appreciate it.
Got it, okay.
So, I'm looking for direction from the board, you know, if, if the board would like to move forward with a project, then Dave and I will work with the bond attorney to draft language for a resolution. And I would also wanna know, you know, when the board would like to take, you know, to take up discussion and possible action on that.
I think we should, we should do it. But like, we talked earlier today, I think April would be the time.
And I'm just gonna lay this out there, cause I'm sure someone's questioning this, if we don't do anything. Where does that leave us, Dan?
Well, it's gonna leave us over the, you know, Dave and I had a conversation today on how the budget ballooning with, um, the, um, repairs that we are having to do. That's just gonna continue to escalate. The thing that I was kinda thinking about it is, uh, we have a lot of technology, a lot of the equipment in the building, your laptop, how long does your laptop last you when you have, buy a laptop at the store? You know, we have equipment, digital equipment that's fifteen years old, that's using old two-wire systems and stuff like that. Um, these things are continuing to fail and it's continuing to escalate. I know I'm talking to our roofer, he's gonna have to raise the amount of our service agreement next year because of the amount of times he had to come out this year, and he's like, I can't. This is beyond our normal, so it's just gonna continue to escalate, and we're gonna then have large items like the chiller type of thing. Where we're starting to have a lot of these things we're not getting ahead of, and I think it's just not being good stewards with the community, again, like Dave says, we're responsible for a hundred million dollar bill. So, if we don't do it, I think we're just gonna continue, uh, to, to experience those costs that we're just no longer gonna be able to. When the price goes up every year.
Yeah, the longer it goes, the more it costs.
And are, are there, are there s- uh, safety concerns also? Are there, uh, security concerns for the building or the student?
So, definitely on the security, it's one of the things that we did not bring up on the tour, uh, that I, I, I did completely forget about, but. Um, going, if you go to other schools, the entrance to the other schools are a lot different than they were designed in two thousand five. Uh, schools usually have a remote, uh, entry outside where you, people ask you remotely before you can enter the building who you are. You go in and you route it directly to the office where there's a door that's unlocked, after you go in the office and then go in out. Ours, we don't have that, you actually get into the building before you release it's that second door. So, that's one of the upgrades, our security upgrades, our cameras, uh, wore out, uh, not able to really get good pictures. So, these are all things that are end of life to begin with, um, and, um, we wanna make sure that we're staying ahead of that and keep up with that.
Mr. Montre, giving you an example, uh, a couple of months ago, we went into a secure hold in our school for the fact of a situation that was outside. Our cameras are not good enough, uh, that we felt to be secure, so we have administration, our SRO outside on our perimeter, making sure that our building was safe. Um, so, uh, to speak to, do I feel like there is a security risk to our building? Yes, hundred percent, not only our entrance, but our camera system, uh, that when we feel like there is an outside, and like I said, we feel there's an outside threat trying to get into the building. We, as an administration team and support team, will go outside to secure the building because we can't trust our cameras and our, our entrance system.
So, basically, it's our responsibility to work on this really hard and make sure that it moves forward.
Well, from a security standpoint, from, from a door standpoint, from a security camera, from a secure entrance. In every school, uh, that, you know, hasn't passed a referendum or hasn't been, built in the last fifteen, twenty years is battling the same issue. Uh, because schools have changed, you know, back when we went to school, it was welcoming environment, every door is open, please come, please come. Now it's, please come, but we wanna make sure who's coming to our building. So, it, it, I, I appreciate the understanding of saying it is our responsibility to make sure our kids and staff are safe at all times.
I agree with Wayne that we need to move forward with this referendum.
Hmm.
To, one, increase our facility, and two, the education that we give to the students.
I'm also in concurrence with both of you.
Yeah.
And I think April would be a good.
April is also a good idea, it'd give us time to work, um, towards that path and make sure that we meet the goal.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is, another board would like to move forward with this plan. With an April resolution, when would you like that as an action item? December meeting or in January?
Let's do it as soon as possible.
Yeah, why don't we do it in December?
Yeah.
December, yeah.
I think we have to do it in December, cause I, I think, you know, to have someone on the outside and not to bring attention to Amy, but having her here and walk through, that's a big plus.
Yeah, we need time to sell it.
And I, and I know other schools may have done it and it didn't pass, but I think it's impactful to get the right speech out there. You know, verbiage out there to show them, this is impacting the younger generation. You know, cause the proverbial, you had Randall pass a referendum, you have Liquid that needs one, and you have other schools, but it's like, what? If I have an eighth grader in that school and going out of it, am I really that concerned? Not so much, but knowing that, hey, we're building this facility now, just like two thousand four, and tech ed was upgraded and brought everybody in to see them upgrade back in the day. And it's like, yeah, we're, you need to increase this because we need to get behind the times.
My only concern with the December is, we do have a lot of passionate, I think, community members and staff members that would like to address to say, I'd like what Amy mentioned, maybe this or this or that or two. I don't know if there's an opportunity for that, but, um, I think that's just something that the board should consider to say, how do we get, um, community support to say? Well, maybe there's needs out there that we're not thinking of, uh, you know, I think Amy maybe mentioned a couple, uh, but also, I'm not sure about the, what that opportunity might look like.
I think the other thing we've been trying to do is capitalize on these junior programs, and when they're at practice, I mean, I sit up in the restroom and I'm probably thirty parents. I know there's basketball parents playing a date and say, hey, Dan's gonna walk you guys around the facility, you're sitting here anyways. Let's get those fifty, eighty parents walking around talking about what we need to do, they're here anyways.
Yeah, I, I would like them walking through, not by themselves, but, you know what I mean, and seeing what, what's going on here.
Wayne and I had the same conversation, we were doing our tour, and I said, we gotta get our parents to do exactly what you see, because you just, you don't know what you, unless you don't know it, and like, you know, once you see it.
The tech areas, the cooking, like, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, so that really is impacting their kids in the next couple of years.
Rob, I'm not sure why, uh, why would December not be good?
I, I, I don't think it's not good, I just think, I, I, I'm, there's a lot of passionate people with the turf fields. It is a, is a big, is, is a big point, and I don't know how many people, uh, are that passionate about it. Uh, Amy, I know you, you mentioned it too, um, I know we have, you know, staff members that are very, very passionate about it. Um, you know, I've also, I, my daughter plays in the Wisconsin Lightling, who also uses the fields at Salem, you know, we went, rent out the field at Westosha. Um, I think those individuals might wanna be heard, um, and try to say, this is the reason why. Um, I just don't want anyone to be isolated by saying that the decision is no, and we're not listening, you know? I think the data that we collected in two thousand three is very strong, I know, you know, the information that we're seeing from other districts is very, very strong. We presented that to, you know, some of our own people, and they kinda dismiss it, um, for the fact that their lens is, this is what's good for the community, I know this is good for our community. I think once they see the bigger picture of the roof, the ceilings, the, this, this, and this, that I think those individuals we need to have on our side and not be alienated or isolated and say, well, they, we don't get turf real, so I'm done. I don't wanna have a referendum lost by fifty people because we didn't give them an opportunity to, you know, voice maybe some concerns, so. That would just be my only thought about that, we can get the information out, uh, we can share the facts, we can share the data. But unless people, I think, feel like they can address, um, you know, the board and say, this is why we're passionate about it, um, I think they're gonna feel isolated and not heard.
Do we have a special meeting for that?
Well, there's some options, you know, we could, we could have a special meeting, call it a listening session, if you will. We also have a working session coming up on Monday, you know, we could add a, a public comment section to that, you know, I, I would certainly say, let's limit that. Um, you know, we don't want two and a half hours of public comment about, you know, three athletic projects, I don't think that's productive use of time. You know, but, but we could say, you know, the first forty-five minutes are gonna be public comment about the referendum. Um, or, you know, we have a meeting on December eighteenth, and there already is a public comment section, and we can use that time, and then the board can take action in January. So, I feel like you have really three options there.
Um, I would say go with the third one. I would say go with the third one. Let them speak on the, the December eighteenth meeting, and then we'll finalize things for January. Time to, what we have to do in January.
Here, here's my thought process, and this is why. Do we allow forty-five minutes on our working session? Because it's closer, and that gives the impactfulness of our teachers being here, instead of staying all the way till six o'clock at night on the eighteen.
And I'd have to check our policy to see, you know.
What we can do?
What we can do.
Okay, because I'm thinking, if you open, if we are able to open it up, to open, communicate, open, I mean, open discussion from that way to here, where we listen, and then have it on the working session and also on the regular session.
Well, I mean, we could hear whoever wants to come in and talk next Monday, but I wouldn't wanna just limit it to that, because it's only a few days away.
No, I'm saying.
But both is fine.
If we can do that. I, I think it gives the community opportunity, gives teachers opportunity.
We can absolutely do that.
Um, coaches a short opportunity.
Yeah, so Mrs. Filon's got that agenda that I sent to you today, the draft for Monday. If you would, add an agenda item for public comment at the very beginning, and then let's review, let's review, you know, what the public comment policy says. And then, you know, obviously, we'll have December eighteenth as well as a second opportunity. So am I hearing that you would like an action item in January?
Well, I thought, I thought you said we have to do it in January.
No, we have a deadline.
January twenty-first is the deadline.
But we could do it anytime between now and then. If we wait till January, that gives the public two opportunities to provide input.
Right.
So January?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Seems like you've got two sets of concerns here, kind of, question of athletics and or, or not. And I think they're the same concerns, kind of, from both sides, right? On the Atlanta side, I think we could have that we can get these components included in it. On the other side of what we're concerned is not a lot of public support for athletics, and they're a part of the statewide right now. Two questions per year, and you could separate them into separate questions. The academic side and the athletics side, there's risks there too, just, you know, some people might, like, I can't look for both, I'm only gonna look for one kind of thing. So that might be a bad strategy to take, but it would easily solve that. What am I in support of and what am I not in support of?
It's an option, but I would not advise that.
It creates the perception that we're asking for too much. At some point, I kind of remember that conversation from a year ago or something like that, for the past referendum. And it's better, in my mind, I think, to just put them all together in one. Is that same concern, maybe?
I think so.
I agree, because I'd hate to have one over the other one.
Right.
Get approved, and then we got our hands tied.
We're at even greater risk of that, if any of our grade schools are going at the same time. You know, then you're asking some families to pass three, and I just.
I don't think it's very common, schools to do that, right?
And I think we gotta go back, and I mentioned it before, it's like, what is, what is on that referendum that I'm gonna vote yes for? I'm not gonna vote yes for a roof, I'm sorry. I'm gonna vote yes for a nursery, I'm gonna vote for yes for maybe a turf, I'm gonna vote yes for a shiny thing that I can tell my kids, like, hey, I voted yes for that. You know, once again, I share an example, I voted yes in Muskego because they built an eighty-yard field house. But I also did an auto shop, they did a, they updated everything. I voted yes, my family voted yes, our friends voted yes, for the fact that that thing, we saw immediate benefit for, for our family. And the rest, we knew was good, but I felt good, comfortable saying, I'm voting yes because of that. And I feel that the nursery and then hearing what, what athletics could do, could be those trigger points to say, yep, I'm gonna vote yes because of that. Because if, I think if we look at the dollar amount going, yeah, I, you know, I wanna vote yes, is my money well spent? You know, is my, is my yes vote well spent? Like, it's yes, well spent, because I know my two-year-old can go to daycare right down the street. Or is my vote a yes vote, my money well spent, because I know my kids will have an opportunity to play on some outstanding services as, as youth and, and, as high school students. So, you know, just my opinion, you know, if I'm overspeaking, I'm sorry. But I just think we gotta find those trigger, those yes points that kinda Amy talked about in the community, to say, yep, I'll vote yes for this, because my money, money is well, well spent there.
I, I agree with that, because I, I think, when you look at anything, if you're doing large budgets, you're not gonna get a hundred percent of people to agree, not a hundred percent of them, but it just doesn't happen. But as long as we can all agree on the majority of it, right? I think most of it is going, I support the roof, and I support this, and I, you know, this group supports, and as you both know, because it's a small part of the question, it's something, you're never gonna agree on a hundred percent of it, nobody's gonna agree on it.
As I was walking through, I mentioned to Dawn, I said, my first school, when I was a principal, I was in the building from eighteen fifty-seven. And so I walk around here, it's a Taj Mahal. I mean, it's a beautiful, beautiful building, and you're showing me a floor, Dan, I'm like, yes, I, I'm like, that's, that's, you know. So that, 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 those components also, is like, we have a lot of hard-working families, as I'd say, exactly what we're talking about. Yeah, I need a new roof too. I, I hope I get it eventually, you know, hopefully, hail damage will pay for it, but, you know, those trigger points, those yes points, I think is, is a huge, huge impact. And I hear it more in the community from our community members, as we're starting to make more relationships within the community. Okay.
Mr. Megan, you came all the way down from Madison or Sun Prairie. Is there anything else that you wanna add, maybe, that we didn't touch on?
No, this is all very good discussion around these issues, and, you know, it is challenging. Where you have a lot of infrastructure on the ballot, you know, there used to be a means to get that done through the revenue exemption. We haven't had that for seven or eight years, but that's the reason why that existed. Was because boards could then decide, Terry's loving to fund infrastructure, roofs, floors, it's kinda dull, boring to a lot of people. Then you go to referendum for the other things that are more exciting. But we have to, of course, put it all on the ballot today. But, no, this is a good discussion, and I know that this past November, we had three hundred million in referendum pass. So that was very good. A lot of referenda passed around the state. Personally, I think a hundred percent should pass, but that may never happen. But, you know, I, I applaud the efforts, what you're putting into this, very thoughtfully, to do a referendum, you know, so. And I understand the challenge too of athletics.
When you were talking about that, we didn't have to go to referendum, the last project, we did, we borrowed about three point six million dollars. That's the last time we replaced some of the roofs here. We did Core Guard at that time, we did some building, heating, lighting, you know. All that, a lot of energy-related improvements and a lot of improvements that would be, so we just make those costs, so, so lower operating expenses. That's our final payment, that's due this year, that's, and that did not have a referendum approval, that's fund thirty-eight, which is outside referendum. And that statute allows us to get a, get a revenue of an exemption to pay for those things that are necessary, right? We don't have that option anymore, so those items that we did before without referendum through that program, not have to be included in the, in this question.
And I know earlier the question was asked, well, what, what if we don't do anything? And, you know, the, a big side of that is, you know, construction inflation's been averaging about seven percent a year since COVID. So it's, it hasn't really gone down too much. So that's compounding year after year, so we always tell clients, you know, it's a tough decision, but if you don't do anything, the needs don't go away, they just get more expensive. And for people who wait, or districts that wait years, it really shows, and then you just get less done, so.
Thank you for that question.
Oftentimes, the best time to do something is now.
Yeah.
Well, not to ring the, the alarm, but there are proposed tariffs too that could impact costs significantly in the next few years here, so. You know, just be aware of that. That seven percent could increase, run more than that, depending on what, what, you know, the federal government decides to do. So, okay, um, well, I think, I think we're on the same page, you know, we'll have, or add a public comment section for Monday, and then we'll look to take action on, or in January.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
All right, can there be, can there be something put, you know, with the notice for the meeting? So that there's, you know, people know that this is the time to come in and
Yeah, if you wanna call the item, you know, public comments regarding proposed capital referendum. You know, that'll signal to people that that's their opportunity to speak.
I just think the more people that we get to come in and talk about it, and then go out and see what's going on, the better off we are.
Do we have something that can go out to everyone in school? Go out to the community outreach, go out to all the additional Panther, junior Panthers?
A communication?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we, we could send a text to everybody. We have a public comment section on our working session coming up. Everybody can come in if we wanted to do something like that, I don't know. We usually save those for emergencies and stuff like that, but that's an option. We have some Skyward, we can blast a message out from Skyward.
I was thinking more Skyward, and if there was like, you got your junior Panther basketball person, you got your junior Panther volleyball, you got, where an email could go out to them saying, can you please share this with the community? With your group of individuals involved in your.
So, so if you're looking to do something like that, I think we need more than a public comment section, you know, limited to forty-five minutes or an hour. I mean, you're talking about putting that information out to thousands of people.
Okay.
We may need to dedicate an entire meeting, you know, if that's what the board would like to do. We'd have to schedule a special meeting to do that. Because, because, you know, you could have a hundred and fifty people show up, and, you know, we'd be limited to ten, you know, ten people speaking, and, and I think, you know, some people could be upset by that too. So.
Well, and I'm sitting here, if you put it out there that it's only a forty-five minute window, but if we had a hundred and fifty show up, that they would know then, after the eighteenth or whatever, I mean, don't get me wrong, I would love this community to jump on board, but I don't think we're gonna get too many on Monday. I'd be shocked if we did, personally, myself, and that's just my opinion. But the eighteenth, we might, with knowing that, do we have the opportunity at that meeting to say, we only have the forty-five minute window, we advertise that, and now, because we see the community that wants to speak about this, we have a special session after that.
Could do that too.
Is that possible? I mean, then we're outreach to everyone to know, I mean, if we only have ten people, we only have ten people, but, I mean, if they are understanding that we highlight forty-five minute window, you know, I don't, I don't know, I.
That's, Christmas break too, is after the eighteenth as well, and then we have to have it in the January meeting, correct? So we would, we would have a big window, have another special meeting, and that's not possible.
Yeah, so I think if we put it out to the junior Panthers group, we're gonna have a lot of parents that are gonna come out and say, yeah, we'd love to have that, because it, it would be great, right? But that's not gonna be representative of the community. So just as long as the board is aware, you know, that, you know, there are people that are passionate about it, but they don't speak for the community at large, you know. You know, we can really do it any, anyway like that. You know, the people who are not interested are not gonna come out and say that, you know, be aware of that, is what I'm saying.
Okay, but if we get people like that coming in here, and if we're prepared to take them out and show them, you know, what we saw tonight.
Well, I don't think we're gonna get people that are interested to see what we saw tonight. I think you're gonna get people that are gonna say, you know, we want turf baseball and softball fields, we want a new tennis court, you know, we want an indoor facility, you know, so we can do football, training in the winter. You know, other schools have that. Those are, I think, the people that are gonna come out and have public comment about athletics. And they're gonna say, we wanna keep up with such-and-such school in the conference, we're gonna lose open enrollment to them, you know, those sorts of things. I don't think people, you know, you're gonna get a lot of people that are interested in, in seeing the floor and the facts area and the tech ed area. I could be wrong, and we can certainly provide that, but I think you're just gonna get, you know, a specific group of people that wanna advocate for athletics.
But I think the tech area and the cooking, like, that is impressive, you know, because I think you will, I mean, I think I'm my sixth grader, he loves athletics, but he loves cooking, and he loves fixing things, so those really did hit home. Where, to your point, like, when Rob said, yeah, if he's going right into the wood course, that's pretty cool to see what they can do in here. And if they get the updated technology, that's really cool. So I think trying to get as many people through just the little walk that Dan did is impactful. Even for someone who I'm gonna vote yes, whether I got the tour or not, but maybe those people that didn't think they needed to go out and talk about it, or talk to the grandparents or the neighbor, maybe that'll just ride home a little bit more. Because the more people that you can get in there seeing what you actually need, is the better off. And we can get those people in the yes group, you know what I mean, those, that's what we need.
I do, and, you know, we'll, we'll have, you know, town hall meetings where we talk about the referendum, and, and that's another opportunity to do those sorts of things. So, you know, if the board would like to do that again, we can, we can do that at any time.
Dawn had a question. I saw your hand.
Well, I was thinking, I know that we're worried about the forty-five minutes, but it also, let's say the junior Panthers are coming, the teachers are coming, and realize you only get one representative to come and have, you have to, as your group, you are representing your group of junior Panthers. You are representing your group of teachers, you are representing your group of coaching. If they're realizing there's only forty-five minutes, they're not all gonna come up and tell you the same thing. Well, they are, but, and for each one individual. But just as Rob said, I think for a referendum in the past, there needs to be something that everyone kind of wants to see. Like, I, I'm a sports person, yes, we're a sports family, but I also care about the tech and the cooking and the, and the roof. I'd like to be warm in the building. It's cold, I'm freezing all the time. So, yeah, I, I see all points of it, but if we talk to all of those individual groups, there's something for everyone, and they're gonna vote yes for that thing. And that's what we need to make sure people are understanding. Not saying that they don't care about the roof, because they don't understand the impact. They don't, they're a boiler, okay, great, but they don't understand the impact if the boiler goes down. But a daycare center, yeah, people are gonna be excited about that, especially when they realize that it's not just for Willnot people. It's for the community. It's for their grandkid. It's for, you know, their great-grandkid. Because we have a lot of, pardon my words, elder that live in this area. They have zero care about Willnot High School. But if we bring it to the point of the grandparents, the aunts, the uncles, the grand, you know, the great-aunts, the nieces, nephews, I think that's gonna get the roots, and I'm not pushing just for sports, but we can get in the Wisconsin Lightning. We can get other, you know, traveling sports leagues that will rent our fields, because they know they can play on it any type of weather. And that will benefit, that'll be a revenue that we can bring in, just a thought.
So go out to the community, instead of have them come to us?
No, I said that they should come to us.
Okay.
But I mean, if we, in your last, just say, we are limited to forty-five minutes. So even if we, before you start public comments, be like, we don't need to hear from every junior Panther football mom.
Right.
We combine your group, you know, we'd like to hear from a, a selective group of people. I mean, that way, they know it's forty-five minutes. Like, I bet if we sent to blast out two teachers and coaches and said, you're gonna, there's forty-five minutes. Pick a representative, you all meet together, combine your ideas, and then have a spokesperson. And I mean, I'm sure Amy can do that for the junior groups, you know, be like, we get one shot, you know, what, we represent the football, we represent basketball, we represent the wrestling, and then they would state their purposes, instead of a hundred people with the same thing.
No, that's good. I've just thrown it out there too.
No, oh, totally agree.
I was like, you know.
Well, I think, you know, Monday, that's pretty close, and then if you also put it out there for the eighteenth.
What is the problem with a, an especial session, if we wanna have one?
And potentially after the eighteenth, if we needed a special session.
Is there any convenience?
And I think that would be beneficial, that people know that you want them to be heard, that you're willing to help them.
Wait a minute. Our fearless leader. The other option is we just have a special meeting, and we dedicate it just a listening session, or it's, it's an open session.
Why don't we see how the ninth and the eighteenth go?
Yeah.
Because if nobody shows up on those.
That's, I mean, if we do a blast, and people know that it's just forty-five minutes, we want to hear people.
But we have to have a time limit, unfortunately.
You're right. I'm not gonna sit here for six hours. Sorry, I love my community, bud.
I've seen that happen.
I know, and it has, it has, so, yeah. I know, and it has, it has, so yes.
But I think if you tell them that, I think that's another positive.
Correct.
And that's bringing the word of one representation per group would be very beneficial.
And throughout the meeting, reminding everybody, we only have forty-five minutes.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we all set on this?
I think so.
Yep.
Okay.
Eighteenth, nineteenth, impossible.
All right, shall we move on?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, um, board reorganization due to a vacancy.
Yes, so, uh, with the resignation of Mrs. Carpenter, we now have a vacant clerk, uh, position that we need to fill. I did attach all of the board, um, um, elected positions, I guess, president vice, president clerk, and treasurer, in, in case you wanna know the details for any of those. And, and in the event that we need to reorganize more than one position, depending on who's appointed for the clerk.
Okay, what we really need right now is a clerk.
Yes.
So.
Uh, I'm no good at that.
That's not what I was looking at you for. Oh, I guess I'll have to do this, I would like to nominate Loriano Camacho as a new clerk.
And I would be happy to accept, thank you very much. I will read my responsibilities, and I will serve with pleasure, thank you.
All right.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Camacho.
My pleasure.
Now we can move on, oops, to the district administrator's search.
Okay, um, so, um, it's bittersweet, but I have announced to the community that I took a position closer to home, and, um, it's recommended that the board, you know, start looking for my replacements soon. I wanna be able to, to get the best candidates before they're hired elsewhere. So, uh, you know, I'd, I'd like to get feedback from the board on, on how you wanna approach this. I rec, I would recommend that you use a firm or a, or a consultant to identify a, a, a pool of candidates that are qualified for the position. Uh, certainly, you don't have to do that, if you were to just post, I think you'd get a much smaller response rate. You know, search firms, they have a, a wide net, so to speak, they can cast it very wide. I was found by a search firm. I provided a list of six that I'm, uh, at least name recognition familiar with, uh, in your packet, there are many more. And I just wanted to hear from you, you know, how you want to move forward.
Unfortunately, I was not here when we searched for you, so, with using CISA, with using our previous one that we acquired you from, what is the process to vet them?
Yeah, so you have a couple options.
Mm-hmm.
You, you can, you can pick one and, and contract with them, you know, they, they all have a fee, um, sometimes it can be quite expensive, you know, but, um, it's a very important position to feel, you wanna make sure you get the right person. So that, that fee is, is worth it, in my opinion. Um, you could ask multiple firms to, to come to a meeting and, you know, kinda make a proposal to you, and explain, you know, what their service is, what you can expect from them, and then you can pick from the group that way, too.
And I believe, if I'm correct, you can actually present the profile, the candidate that you would like to see for that particular community, and they will do the search in that direction. There is the, uh, Wisconsin, uh, Association of School Boards that offer that service to, uh, to find the superintendent for, for the school. I have a link to that, if you want, I can share with all of us here, and maybe learn a little bit more of the process that is required to.
They're the top one on my, um, on my list here for you. Um, I did also add the, the contact for the person who oversees the searches there, um, you know, uh, Mr. Tranjo, if you wanted to, to reach out, you could do that.
That was gonna be my next question, who's in charge of this?
Well. Do you need help from the clerk? I am very familiar with extensive knowledge of hiring, so, uh, I hire, uh, directors, managers, regional managers, interviews. And this probably won't be too different to hire, uh, ensuring that they have a fit to our community. So it's probably something that we need to talk amongst ourselves and make sure that we head in the right direction.
Yeah, um, I'd ask Dr. Plord to, to be part of the whole process.
Well, yes, absolutely.
Because we're more than satisfied with him, and he knows the right questions to ask, what to look for, um.
Can he be a candidate?
I cannot, unfortunately.
And I would be comfortable with him recommending from, from the list that he has, you know, who we should go through. Now, the rest of the process, I've been through it before.
Okay.
Um, when we get down to finalists, then there's, um, there's a committee appointed. There will be some board members, there will be others, it'd be probably faculty members, it could be a couple of community members. And there's questions asked, and then that committee meets and comes up with who their finalist is.
Is it better to get a recommendation from you out of them, or is it better for us to pull in three and have them present? What is your thought process? Because that puts a lot of pressure on you going, I recommend this, and we don't like anybody that came out of it. Not saying that would happen, but.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay.
So, I can contact these firms and, you know, get proposals from them, and I can, you know, give you my recommendation, or, you know, we can invite maybe three, um, in and have a meeting and, and have them present to you. And then, you know, you can decide from there. We could go either way.
Yeah, what, what I've seen also, and the, the successful process of, of, uh, onboarding and hiring somebody and selecting it, is to do it individually and sharing the thoughts at the end. Uh, and, and I've seen that they do that with boards, and I've seen that they do that with, uh, high-level positions, uh, as opposed to go with one, uh, general opinion. But it's important, in my mind, to listen not only to, uh, you know, the directors of the school, and I'm thinking that maybe the principal also should be at some point considering the process of decision.
We definitely wanna include staff, uh, community members, maybe even some students, somewhere in the process, definitely.
I would say we need, I don't wanna put that pressure on Dr. Plord, in an essence. And, and I don't think it's fair of us to do that, that's my own personal opinion. I think we need to bring two or three of them in, and then have them present to us, so we can get a feel of what's good, bad, and different. I mean, we have his expertise, because he went through that process.
I, I agree.
I know you've gone through that process, but you, we've got a lot of new people, and I'm one of them, I've never been through that process.
You can't go wrong if, if you, if you bring three in and have them pitch to you.
Okay.
You know, and then you can compare them.
Okay, but we need to get that going.
Yeah, so we really should probably schedule a special meeting for that, then. You know, that, that could, that could take an hour and a half or two hours, potentially. So we would wanna add that to another meeting that we already have scheduled.
So is it realistic to, to expect that through the eighteenth?
No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that on the same night we already have a meeting scheduled. That'll, that'll take some time.
Oh, so you want a special meeting then?
A special meeting, yep.
Okay.
Um, and I would say no sooner than that week, you know, just because it's gonna take, um, these firms' time, I don't know what information, you know, they're gonna want from us, you know, but we could look to potentially get a few in the sixteenth, the seventeenth, or the nineteenth of that week.
Well, it, it's just the fact that the sooner we get going on this, because the, the best candidates go quickly, and we don't wanna miss out.
And that is absolutely the case with the change right now in, uh, government, it's, it's happening already in the market, very highly. They, they switching, and people are changing jobs, and, yeah, I totally agree that we need to get it going sooner.
Okay, so why don't you, why don't you find out when we can do this?
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay. And would you like three? I think that's a good number.
I would.
Yeah, three sounds good. Or three candidates.
No, three firms.
Yes, absolutely.
Hopefully, they'll find a lot of candidates. And then, and then, you know, basically, they start the process, they identify the candidates through an application process. Uh, typically, the firm will do the first round of screening interviews, you know, a consultant or two from, from the firm will meet with all qualified candidates, uh, typically, uh, over like a Zoom, twenty to thirty minutes each. And then they'll come to the board, uh, present in a closed session, they're top candidates, and then you'll have the option of, you know, interviewing that whole batch. Or you could pull in, you know, somebody that they didn't rank highly, but maybe you were impressed by their, by their resume, or you, you know, maybe you know them or know of them, that sort of thing. Um, and then, you know, we go on with probably two more levels of interviews beyond there.
So they, I, I realize that they might request the profile of the candidate that we wanna see. Uh, do we have that already somewhere from previous, um, similar processes that we have followed with maybe you or?
So, 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 um, there hasn't been anything developed since, since I've been here?
Okay.
There was a candidate profile when I was hired, but that's dated now.
We can, we can take a look at that as a, as a, as some sort of draft, and then add probably what we have in mind, because I have some, like, two or three key points that I would like to include in the process of selection, that would be from my interest. Uh, such as academic performance, how to improve academic performance, and a couple more. But I think we can piggyback on what we already have and maybe make some improvement, I think.
Yeah, and, and, and that might be part of the process, you know, that the firm will work with you on that, too. So, we'll, we'll ask that question, you know, when we contact them, what does that look like, and what do they need from us? Okay. Okay?
Yep.
All right.
All right.
I make a motion, anybody else want to get anything said? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mike got it. All in favor?
All of us are in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done.
Thank you for attending tonight.